Okay, we had a few technical difficulties so I think we're back and ready to go again. So at this time, I'd like to start from the beginning on my trustee comments. I'd like to take a moment to address the events of the past week or so. Many of us watched the video of the interaction between George Floyd and former Minneapolis police officers. Genoa's Police Chief Campbell said it well on the department's Facebook page and in an email to residents that he was "shocked, horrified, and disgusted" at this site. Well over 100 residents commented, shared the chief's sentiments, and many praised Genoa Township's police department for the manner in which our officers interact with citizens. Our officers operate under a philosophy of community-oriented policing, meaning that they implement organizational strategies to address the causes of crime through problem-solving tactics and police-community partnerships. Officers host coffee with a cop regularly, National Night Out annually, and on any given day, they are intentionally fostering positive interactions as they get to know residents at level aid stands, at birthday parties, or as they distribute care packages to the homeless. Officers receive training regularly from the department, and some are pursuing advanced degrees with our support. Certification by CALEA, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, ensures integrity, transparency, and accountability of members, of which we are one. I trust that these actions are taken to ensure tragedy will not strike here as it did in Minneapolis. As a result of the anguish caused by George Floyd's death, some protests have turned violent nationwide, including in downtown Columbus. Whereas here in Genoa Township, our officers have already met to assist organizers in planning a peaceful protest. This is the way productive discussions begin. We all expand our understanding by sharing experiences and ideas, not through violence and destruction. And we thank our police department for their service. Are there other trustee comments this evening?
Yes, I've got a couple. First, I had on my list also to thank the Genoa Township Police Department for assisting the Columbus Police Department in the riots and protests downtown. They were asked to assist in the bottom panel that they have offered their services. Also, I've never been more thankful about our police department than now because I feel safer knowing they're right down the street. And finally, I would like to comment again how I prefer to use the platform than Facebook or our live streaming game so that we can allow fellow comments.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, I really don't have anything to add, or it's gonna be agenda-wise, I was gonna suggest, but I understand we are gonna be talking about that a little later, so this time, I have nothing else to add. Appreciate your comment. It was about the opening of the community purpose.
Oh, okay.
I was concerned if that's our work, that's about that, and I understand what you're saying.
Very good. All right. The next thing on our agenda was the zoning nuisance resolutions. However, those have been resolved, and so there is no need to discuss this. We'll move on to maintenance.
Yes, this evening, the maintenance department has the trustee, the purchase order to the trustees to Shelley and Sands for the summertime 2020 paving program. That amount of money will be used to top coat the projects that the township has been working on this spring, and I recommend they approve the purchase order as written.
I move to authorize a purchase order to Shelley and Sands Incorporated in the amount of $150,490.34 for the 2020 Delaware County Road Improvement Program. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? None, hearing none, roll call?
Roll call, Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under old business this evening, the board has reviewed, taken a couple months, solicited comments from the public on the Parks Trails Master Plan, and it's listed under Old Business of Administration, and is it the board's wish this evening to move ahead with full adoption of that plan?
I would like to do that if my fellow trustees agree. Yeah. Okay. Are there any comments on this before I make a motion?
Again, Molly, you did a great job putting this together. The only thing I, and I don't know if we need to progress it to date, I just think it's some things that you need to committee to look at as far as sort of prior stations, priority projects. I don't, I mean, I designed to do it in a right-of-the-water place, you know, there would have been a comment maybe in here that that wasn't maybe as in line with some of the goals projected, so the parks we have has not been on priority. Preservable to destroy these or conscious buildings, it's a high cost, we had a one, maybe a two. So I can sit down and go over these with you if you'd like, or send them to you. I don't think there's anything, there's no deal with it here by any means. I just thought that maybe we have some of the prioritizations of those projects, but overall, it's been a long time coming, and the committees were putting this together and moving on.
Thank you. We had a lot of really great work. And just to note, Molly McHale, the chair of the Parks Committee is here with us this evening, should there be any questions.
I just want to commend the Parks Committee for sharing and organizing this great plan. I did review the updated plan, and I know there was just a few little changes, and I think I did go back and look at the public comments and made sure that it was addressed to the plan, and I feel like everything that is in the plan is up for, so nice job on that. Thank you.
Connie, a good one, just as a follow-up. It fits in a little bit with the plan, but it also fits in, I think, a little bit with the Legacy Program or the Parks Program. I think Bob had mentioned that we're getting to a point with some of the benches, that we're getting to have a lot of those in certain areas. It's recommended, actually I had two residents mention it to me, that, you know, once we're able to socialize a little bit, that maybe we set up, we're not, we've got a conversation that's where we have maybe four benches forming a conversation area, maybe some kind of table or something in the middle, I'm not suggesting a firework when I have a chance, but some people, adults, can sit around, gather, visit, socialize a little bit. So I think it would help, allow people to continue to donate benches, and if they don't have any, we can kind of steer in that direction and try and put together respective attributes in the parks. So I just, for that, it's a suggestion.
I like that one. Yeah. Thank you.
And I would also like to thank Molly McHale for chairing the committee, those members, all the committees that have worked so hard on this. Leslie Stryder for doing the lion's share of the committee's actual document, the writing and all the graphics and everything, and Brad Weldon for being part of the smaller group that did a lot of the editing and the research on this. So I believe it was a great job by many. With that, I will make a motion to formally adopt the Genoa Township Parks and Trails Master Plan for 2020 as presented this evening. Is there a second?
Sure.
Very good. Any further discussion?
My question is, if so, if Carl sits down with Molly, then the committee, then makes changes in the priority, will we break back before us improve it? How does that work?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily saying, I mean, if they want us to have a visit, we can. I'm just suggesting that maybe they look at that, prioritize it a little bit. I think if there's substantial changes, if they feel like they want to break back, then fine. Again, I don't see any deal holders here. You know, it's a matter of, a lot of it's gonna be a matter of money, perfectly honest, and looking at what are some of the immediate needs versus some of the longer-term needs. So that's the only thing I'm suggesting.
I think too that even though we prioritize them, it's not like it's carved in stone. You know, if there's something that even if it's a lower priority than something else, but yet there was a, something that presented itself that made it feasible to do that before something else, I think we would consider doing that. The splash pads, you know, or the water feature, interacting water feature is not a splash pad. You know, we really talked a lot about that one because of the discussion here, the last meeting, and we kind of decided that, you know, we have it carved in stone, we haven't created it, it's not like we're asking for the money for it now, it's a concept. And so we, there's a lot of research ahead of that and for before that would be come to fruition, and same thing with a lot of that stuff. There's a lot of research that would have to happen in order for a lot of that stuff to happen. So I think that some of the priorities could shift even just based on that research. So, you know, yeah, I would love to hear your thoughts as far as priorities go and changing and any of that, but I don't, I think it's completely up to you guys how to break back, and we would, if that's what you want to do.
We first, number six, develop an ADA-friendly play for all buildings, playgrounds, and all community partners, incorporate ADA women in all parks. We had that as a priority too, but I think we, from a policy standpoint, anytime we've made a change, we've always looked at the ADA aspects of it when we've done any of it. So that's almost, you know, an ongoing policy, I think, so that's all I'm saying. We don't have to die by the priority levels of the codes, but I don't know people who make that assumption either.
Yeah, glad that you mentioned it.
With that, let's do roll call.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Very good. We've now adopted the 2020 Parks Plan, Parks and Recreation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's great. Speaking of parks and recreation, at this time, I would just like to announce that the state of Ohio just gave the trust, the township, the permission to reopen playgrounds next Wednesday. So with that in mind, all restrooms, playgrounds, basketball courts, water at all facility, at the community gardens and the shed will be open next Wednesday, so.
That's June 10th.
June 10th. So a lot of residents will be happy about that move, so. But I still encourage all the residents when they are out using our equipment or our restrooms to please, take care of yourself, make sure you wash your hands, et cetera, after your usage of the equipment. Like I said, we're limited on staff and ability to clean all the facilities that we have with the given budget that we have, so just wanted to announce that to the board.
Very good. Thank you.
Also, tonight, we have the board under new business. The township has received from the Delaware County Auditor the certificate of estimated property tax revenue that would be generated if the board chose, chooses to move ahead with the .6 mil Parks and Recreation levy. At the last meeting, when we went through the resolution of necessity, the board passed a resolution contingent upon, they made the amendment to the resolution for the Parks and Recs to include the word Trails, and the county, and they made the motion contingent upon the prosecutor approving the language. Just want to report back that the word Trails did have to be removed out of that language because the state law did not recognize the word Trail as part of that type of a resolution. The county prosecutor considered Trails to be inclusive in Parks and Recreation, so the state would, if it went further here with the word Trails, he feels that the state, Secretary of State would reject the language as we sent out. So with that in mind, we've removed the word Trails from the resolution to proceed this evening if you choose to move ahead.
Thank you for that update. So at this point, it's my understanding that we need to acknowledge the received this and then move forward. So with that, I will move to acknowledge the Delaware County Auditor's certificate of estimated property tax revenue for an additional .6 mils to levy a tax outside the 10 mil limitation for Parks and recreational purposes to be placed on in November 3rd, 2020 general election. The estimated property tax revenue that will be produced by the state and village is calculated to be $658,322. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
That motion passes. All right. So next is the resolution to proceed with the submission of a question of levying a property tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of Parks and recreational purposes. The Board of Trustees of Genoa Township, Delaware County, Ohio, the board met in regular session on June 4th, 2020 with the following members present, Carl Gephardt, Renee Vaughn, and Connie Goodman, and as such, I will move the adoption of the following resolution as presented, and I will specify a few points out of this. The number of mils is .6 mils, the total dollar amount of revenue generated will be This is an additional levy, the term of which is three years. The territory is upon the entire territory of the township. The date of the election is November 3rd, 2020, and the tax year in which the tax will first be levied is 2020. The calendar year in which the tax will first be collected is 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Discussion? Hearing none?
Roll call, Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Very good. This motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that, and we'll ask the board to sign a copy of an original resolution so that we can file that up at the Board of Elections as soon as we get Pat Meyer's signature on that resolution also, that it will be filed next week. So thank you for making the deadline for that. Next up is the semi-annual payment, the TIF payment, to the Westerville City School District. Just a background for you, the township is in the, in an agreement with the Westerville School District to pay them back for monies owed to them on the annual TIF agreement. The TIF agreement will be ending in the year of 2025. So with that in mind, the semi-annual payment is $380,144.31. I recommend the board pay this, pay the school district.
I move to approve a purchase order to Westerville City Schools in the amount of $380,144.31 for the TIF payment for the first half of tax year 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none? Roll call?
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Your motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we have, under the Police Department business, I'd like to move on. Correct? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm using an old version.
That's all right.
All right. This evening, you have before you some recommendations from the county prosecutor's office to, that would allow the re, will allow the transient vendors to once again be able to solicit the township at their homes. Some, the amendment this evening is being recommended just so that the, those that are approaching of the township homes follow all the rules and regulations of the state of Ohio Department of Health. So we, since we're into the pandemic phase, all solicitors that come to their house will be required to wear a mask and to socially distance away from our residents. So the current resolution that was written in 2004 didn't anticipate this type of scenario happening, so with this new language included, I'd like to recommend the board pass this resolution.
I will move the adoption of the following resolution, preamble, whereas the board previously approved the following resolution hereafter referred to as the vendor resolution, number 04-18, date approved was June 9th, 2004. Whereas Resolution 04-18 instituted regulations on transient vendors in the township, and whereas in light of the current COVID-19 pandemic in the state of Ohio, the board desires to amend the vendor resolution to include protections for the health and safety of township residents. The resolution now therefore being resolved by the board as follows. One, Resolution 04-18 is amended to include an additional paragraph that reads, if there is a national, and this will be paragraph 29, if there is a national, state, or local health pandemic or a declared public health emergency in effect for Genoa Township, transient vendors shall abide by all laws, rules, and regulations imposed by public health officials while registered to conduct business under this resolution. Two, no other sections of Resolution 04-18 are changed, and it remains in full force and effect. Three, all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the board, and all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including RC 121.22. And four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Paul, anything I would suggest, and I know you probably know a bit of enforcing it, but I think it's just us trying to make an effort with the city of Westerville. There's, I just think a lot of confusion, there are people who get a transient vendor's permit from Westerville, they include Genoa Township because they say, well, it's Westerville. And for those most people that look right on the line, basically, it can be confusing. I think it'd be good to just send a letter to the city of Westerville, just reminding them to clarify with any transient vendors that there is a distinct difference between the city of Westerville and Genoa Township. And again, hopefully it helps, but if not, let me do it.
Okay.
I have a couple comments. First, I just want to make the public aware that we've had a petition one vendor write in a lawsuit, that's kind of why we've had to pass this. Paul did reach out to the prosecuting attorney's office in Delaware County, and they assured us that we can't stop people from knocking on doors. They have a legal right to. However, residents are free to post no salesmen or no solicitation sign on the front door if they are uncomfortable with people coming to their door in this pandemic. That would be my recommendation. Also, I did notice while we approved the verbiage that there is a paragraph, it's the second to the last paragraph, number 23, says that all Genoa Township identification signs at entrance to the township that are maintained by the township hall have placed upon them by the road department a sign reasonably calculated to inform the passerby in a vehicle or otherwise traveling of solicitation. Again, are we supposed to notify? Sorry, I don't know.
Yep, the, the, I think back in 2004, they used to post a small placard on the, at the entrance ways of the township. It had some language about transient vendors must be licensed. So I can talk to Bob and see if we could make something like that, that we can affix to the local, at our local entrance signs that could be posted to be compliant with the resolution.
Yeah, so we're, I just feel like since it's been here, we ought to be doing it. I haven't been sitting on the chair quite a lot.
The other item too is if, if the vendors, and it's hard to police this unless the residents let us know what's happening. I'm gonna have Leslie put out a notice about solicitors and the guidelines or the recommend, the rules surrounding them, because what happens is the regs get a little lax for them, and they start soliciting outside of the allowed times. I mean, parents get upset when there's someone ringing their bell at 9:00, 9:00 PM saying, you know, "I'm here to sell you weed control or mosquito stuff." So the residents need to help, if they see this happening, notify the police that that is happening, and we can pull their license, and that's a violation of the terms of their agreement. So I don't like that happening. I don't like to sit down and eat at 6:00 o'clock when I know that they're done at 5:00 and the doorbell rings. So I'm gonna be quick on the trigger to protect our residents from the hassling of people who are exceeding the rules and regulations that we've provided.
That would be good, and she could also add that we have amended this with just the basics, so that residents know that we are trying to protect their safety during this time and other times.
Okay.
Not everyone unfortunately will listen to the audio, and so this will be an opportunity. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes. Motion carries.
Great. Next up is a request from the Police Department to start, anticipate the furnishing of their new police building. Currently, they're planning to take over to the new police station, all their electronic devices, the computers, the monitors, a lot of the machines needed to run their police facility. There, a lot of the new stuff they're requesting this evening is furniture that will fit the rooms, and it's been, all of the furniture has been sized by Deputy Chief Shabali with the vendor. It'll be built for the room, and it will be paid for out of the police budget, not out of the bond levy. These are funds that we anticipated last November to spend on the facility, and we budgeted about $130,000 for this project, and the bid came in through a state vendor at $113,859.72. I'd like to recommend the board this evening pass that resolution.
I move to authorize a purchase order to Continental Furniture in the amount of $113,859.72 for furniture for the new police facility. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I just want to thank them for putting it on the budget.
Always nice, isn't it?
I'll pass it.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes, motion carries. And at this time, I also, like you said, I drove past the police station today, and it's really coming along. It's almost under the roof, the fire group, and I just hope they really, really like building that, so good job, Paul.
Did we get, I mean, are we on schedule or are we?
We are, well, we do have some weather days that they weren't able to work. The vendor, Gutnik Construction, the contractor, says that we're probably about two weeks behind. Once the sheeting gets on the roof and then they felt it, then they'll really start going to town internal. And there's a lot of vendors inside that building will be working at one time, so he's not too worried about that. That's understandable to have that much of a delay with the weather that we have in Ohio, but, you know, we're probably about 40% complete on that, so the next parts are gonna be the major parts coming up. You know, the air handlers are in place, the backup generators are in place, and like I said, once we get that roof on there, then they'll start working on the other things. And the windows, if you've seen, are starting to go in place, so it's really starting to shape up.
We could, you know, maybe have a path or, and we'll achieve the goal, the other kind of budget, just where we are in relationship to the budget.
No, you have that tonight in your packet, if you, you know, under the payout?
Under the payout.
It's, it's, under the fifth pay application, you can actually see how much is completed and paid out to date.
In that box?
Yeah, under line four, there's been, you can see that two minutes. Yeah, under line four, there's been, you can see that $2,616,504.66 have been put into that facility, uh, to date. So, that'll give you some idea where we are. And, and there is a little less actually, when you consider some of the retainage, so it's like 2.4 million. Yep.
So, we're tracking?
Yes.
For the?
Yep. Like I, and, you know, every payout, the way a payout goes, it, it runs from the, the contractor, then it goes over to the architect, uh, for their certification, and then Donna and I will both get ahold of the pay apps and go through this thing, and then we review the prevailing wage reports, which is a major headache, isn't it Donna? Very thick, very, it's a, it's a booklet every time we get the prevailing wage, and it's, uh, it's gone through very, uh, in-depth, so, just to let you know. But, getting back to the agenda.
Right.
Connie's reeling me in.
No. You didn't get focused yet, that's more.
Same, uh, we do have the police levy, uh, certification of the revenue on the agenda this evening, and, uh, same as with the parks. I'll let Connie move ahead.
Go ahead. I move to acknowledge the Delaware County Auditor's Certificate of Estimated Property Tax Revenue for a renewal and decrease of 4.2 mils to levy a tax outside of the 10 mil limitation for police district purposes to be placed on the November 3rd, 2020 general election. The estimated property tax revenue that will be produced by the state of village is calculated to be $4,143,492. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Well, sorry, no, I meant to ask after the park, what happens after this?
Okay.
Have you proved it? We're gonna prove it again, and then?
Yeah, so, once the resolution to proceed is passed, then, and all of the trustees have signed the document, including Pat, then the township, basically me, will take this up to the Board of Election, to them, and then they will review this, they take time and they, they check the language, make sure everything is appropriate, and then they send it off to the, the Secretary of State's office, and it'll end up on the ballot. So, I-
So, we don't do anything after this?
No.
But, if there's an error, will it come back?
Yes, and it, we are allowing some time that we, if there is a problem, they will, they will come back to us and we can make changes. Sure.
Roll call, Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, now, this is the resolution to proceed with the submission of a question of renovating the renewal with a decrease for an existing property tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for police district purposes. The Board of Trustees of Genoa Township, Delaware County, Ohio, the Board met in regular session on June 4th, 2020 with the following members present, Carl Gephardt, Renee Vaughn, and Connie Goodman, and I move the adoption of the following resolution, and will do as presented, and let me specify certain things here. The specified number of mils is 4.2. The dollar amount of revenue to be generated is $4,143,492. This is, um, not the same rate as the existing tax levy, it is a reduction, the extent of the reduction being .4 mils. It is a renewal with a decrease for the term of five years upon the entire territory of the township. The date of the election is November 3rd, 2020, and the tax year in which the tax will first be levied is 2020. The calendar year in which the tax will first be collected is 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Roll call, Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is pay application number five for the police facility. Um, the current payment due on this pay application is $622,228.44. I ask the board, uh, approve this application.
I move to approve and authorize the release of pay application number five to movement construction in the amount of $622,628.44 for the Genoa Township Police Facility. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Roll call, Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Great. Uh, next up is the Fire Department levy. Uh, you have there the certification of estimated property tax revenue.
I move to acknowledge the Delaware County Auditor's Certificate of Estimated Property Tax Revenue for a renewal and decrease of 5.3 mils to levy a tax outside of the 10 mil limitation for fire and EMS purposes to be placed on November 3rd, 2020, uh, general election. The estimated property tax revenue that will be produced by the state and village is calculated to be $5,226,110. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Roll call, Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes. Motion carries. Next is the resolution to proceed with the submission of a question of levying a renewal with a decrease of an existing property tax in excess of the 10 mil limit, limitation for fire and EMS purposes. The Board of Trustees of Genoa Township, Delaware County, Ohio, the Board met in regular session on June 4th, 2020 with the following members present, Carl Gephardt, Renee Vaughn, and Connie Goodman, and as such, I will move the adoption of the following resolution as presented with specific information, including the specified number of mils being 5.3, the dollar amount of revenue generated, $5,226,110. This is a 5.3 mil levy, it is not the same rate as the existing tax levy, it is a deduction, the extent of the reduction being .2 mils. It is a renewal levy with a decrease. The term is five years. The territory will be the entire territory of Genoa Township, the date of the election being November 3rd, 2020. And with that, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And, any discussion?
Roll call, Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board. That's all I have this evening.
Okay. Is there anything else from the trustees to comment for the board this evening?
Just, uh, going back to the levies and, and specifically for us, uh, I think we've talked about it, and we all need to be better off into this, and, uh, but I think it's important that we help the residents understand, you know, the matter of reduction and both of all base and fire. Uh, this doesn't mean that, you know, they were, uh, we were taxing the folks, it's just the circumstances have been that, you know, the boat chiefs and the departments and negotiations, uh, are budgeting it as reducing taxes. Plus, we have added an increase in, as we evolve some of the new development, that also takes some pressure off existing residents. So, that has formed that storm, where we are able to provide a slight reduction, uh, at the request of the chief, um, that can then be used to provide the taxes, the dollars, the levy opportunity to provide the dedicated money for the park, resulting in new taxes. So, I think that's going to be, uh, important, that we have a dedicated funding, and, uh, still gonna be up to the residents, of course, to the vote, but, um, I commend the fire chief, the police chief, for the job of data and, and keeping a handle on costs, and, um, you take nothing for granted, you've always had good success in passing levies in our township, but, uh, you know, we still have to convince the residents it's a good move.
Thank you for bringing it up, and I would also like to, um, bring up a point that you brought up last time, Trustee Gephardt, and that is that if a parks levy is passed, that that will relieve, relieve some of the, uh, drain on our general fund, because currently we pull money for parks out of the general fund. A levy would then have that money not used from the general fund and allow that to be used for other emergencies. And we've had to do that in the past for some of the cash bases and, and, um, ramp, the ADA ramps, et cetera, and so that would help us as a township, so.
I just want to say, it's one of the reasons, um, I was in favor of our slowly, is because I do see in my short time here what is happening with the general fund, and, and I do think as a responsible person in the township, we can't defeat the general fund as much as we are every year, eventually, um, we will be in a tough spot. So, we're not there yet, um, but in order to maintain our parks responsibly, we're gonna need parks levy.
Alright, with that, the announcements are June 8th, this is zoning commission, June 23rd, the Board of Zoning Appeals, July 1st, the Parks Advisory Committee, and the next trustee meeting will be July 2nd, 2020.
That's not true, we have one in June.
They canceled.
Okay, so we're, yeah, I think that is, okay.
Oh, okay. With that, I will move to adjourn this meeting at 7:17 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Roll call, Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes, we are now adjourned at 7:17 PM. Thank you.